This is our September 10th City of Palack Commission meeting. We will have our invocation at this time by the Dr. Ken Johnson Executive Director, Rowley Heepers Boyce Ranch, followed by our special guest Lance who's going to lead us in the pledge to the flag. So we'd ask everyone to stand at this time.
Let's take just a moment for a moment of silence in recognition of the victims of September 11 terrorist attacks. Our Heavenly Father, we come now to your throne of grace and power. We acknowledge our abundance of blessings from your hand of mercy and ask you to forgive us our sins. We ask you to help our city. As we remember tomorrow, the attack on our nation on September 11, 2001, we ask you to continue to undergird the suffering families, lost loved ones in the tragedy. For those policemen, firemen, and utility workers that gave their lives in their effort to assist, that was to remember their ultimate sacrifice. For those who still carry the scars, twisted limbs, and burns, we ask you to continue to relieve their pain and help with their challenges. We ask you this evening for your wisdom and grace so we might honestly define our problems, see them the way that you see them, and solve them with the tools you have given us. That was to be bold in our beliefs, frugal in our money, thorough in our service to others, and compassionate with those who are truly poor in mind and spirit. We covet your presence here this evening and give you the glory before we start. We ask that you anoint these proceedings in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Will it come up, Lance? Please join us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give Lance a round of applause. It's always good to see our young people come in and participate. Roll call please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown. Commissioner Borum.
President.
Commissioner Campbell.
President.
Commissioner Norwood.
Here.
All members are present at the county floor.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes from our 816-15 meeting with Spire Assessment Forum and our 18 meeting, which was a call meeting and our two budget workshop?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve on the floors. A second. Motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our public recognition section of our agenda, we've got student volunteer recognition. I'd ask Ms. Mandy Tucker to come up with me at this time. Ms. Tucker, present.
Joshua, will you step over here for me? This young man is a... I'm sorry, I can't see. This young man has given... The majority of the summer he dedicated to working over the River Center, and they worked tirelessly to help get the River Center done. They did everything from data collection to helping us get everything cleaned up just to have the grand opening. So it's not very often that you see young people that come in and work the way that these young people were dedicated to work. They were there every day, on time, and they stayed late. And so we want to do it... We've got a distinguished community service award for you at this time, and it simply raised the certificate of appreciation is awarded by the Palack City Commission to Joshua Allen Data Busters Incorporated, student professional, and grateful recognition for your hard work and professionalism as a 2015 summer guide at the St. John's River Center, awarded this 15th day of September, AD 2015, Tarrell Little Mayor, Betsy Dirvis Clerk, Commissioner Mayor Lawson Brown, Ruppers Borum, Justin Campbell, James Norwood, City Manager Terry Suggs, Facilities Coordinator Mandy Tucker. And we want to thank you for your hard work. We also have Zebba Torres who couldn't be here today, who has an award that brings the same.
I'll make sure to get that.
And we want to make sure to get over to him. And again, we thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it, Joshua.
Thank you.
We also want to recognize Joshua's family that's in the back that came and joined in today. Will you please stand up so that we can acknowledge you? We'll now move on to public comment. Public comment's limited to three minutes. There'll be no action taken on the topics of discussion, but you will have an opportunity to address our public comment items. Is there anyone here for public comment? We've got one person. Will you come forward? Got Mr. Len Freeman.
I would thank you for allowing me to speak to the city, you know, Mayor, Commission...
Name and address.
And Mr. Suggs and Mr. Holmes. My name is Len Freeman. I live at 422 River Street, Palack. Most of you know me, have an idea of my background, which has been real estate for most of the last 40 years or so. So as being in the real estate business, I'm currently retired from the real estate business, but when you've been in it for so long, one of the things that we were taught as real estate agents is to be observant of what's going on with the real estate market. That means as you drive around, you look at what's empty, what's not, where the signs are up, where the signs indicate that signs should be up. And a comment that the mayor made, I've heard him make once or twice, that we have been listed as a dying city. I believe it's because from the 2000 census to the 1010 census, we have less population in the city over that 10th year period. So what I also know is, is that all the surrounding counties and towns are experiencing growth, in some cases double digit. So why we are not worries me. And the second thing that worries me is I drive around town, I see more and more and more residences that are not occupied. There are probably lots of reasons. You can speculate that somebody died, the ownership, the heirs live out of town, maybe they don't have money fixed up, they can't get it on the rental market, maybe it's not good enough to be on the rental market, all sorts of reasons. It could be a foreclosure, parents move in with their children, children move in with their parents, and several other reasons. But what we don't know is exactly what those statistics are. And we're in the middle of a census period, and I believe that, I believe what my grandfather used to tell me, that I wasn't smart enough to know that I wasn't smart enough to do something. I think collectively, we understand that we don't just have an elephant in the room, we've got a whole service. We've got, and we don't have very much data. So I believe that we should recognize that if our population truly is declining, we ought to know about it now, not wait another five years until we get a census. Secondly, I'd like to know why these houses are empty. I do know that if you look at the statistics from foreclosure sales in the county over the last three months, out of a few dozen, only two of them have been bought by individuals. The rest of them have been picked up by the plaintiffs. I see Mr. Holmes shaking his head. I think you agree. Plaintiff's being the banks typically. Many of those aren't on the market. We don't know why, but I think we need to find out. And I would suggest tonight that we put together a group of folks, maybe a few real estate professionals, whoever it might be, to examine where there are opportunities for us to get true professional help. This is not, we're not the only kind of city in the United States that's experiencing this. But I think we need true professional help to do, to find the statistics that are going to tell us why this is happening, well, what's happening first, and then maybe why this is happening, so that we can find a method to work to rectify it. Because if we don't, five years from now, we're done. So I would suggest that we, that we put some money out there, or try and identify some money that can be used for, to do this. And I thank you very much for your time, and an opportunity maybe later to discuss it further.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Come forward, man. Just take your name and address for the record.
My name is Gwolwes Sullivan. I live at South Eighteenth, Seven, Seven Wells, South Eighteenth Street. I wholeheartedly agree with this gentleman. I've been back in town now for a couple of years, and I bought my house for tax deed apps. If you've looked at the sale of the list for the taxes this month going up for auction, a lot of them are in the city. Maybe a lot of these people cannot afford the taxes. And I would like to recommend that we look at, you know, like our water rates and this type thing, and be aware that a lot of people just cannot afford this. I know when I look at my water bill, and before I came back to Palack, I worked and retired here, go back and forth to work, lived here most of my life, I pay a $20 water bill. And then when I see this water bill, you know, it's kind of hard to take. And when I drive around the city, our city is not clean. And I wholeheartedly agree that maybe we need to lay this out in a grid work and a map. And clean this part, go on and on and on, start all over. And this is a common complaint that I hear from people in the city. So if we could clean our city up and keep it clean, this would be an encouragement for people to come into our city and rebuy and relocate here. Thank you.
We'll invite you to come over. We do Palack a Pride, just for information purposes. We do have a Palack a Pride initiative that goes on. Palack a Pride is our initiative, our cleanup initiative. The commission, along with various community groups within the area, we actually go out to the community on a monthly basis. We do cleanups. We'll actually go in, we'll go to homes, and we'll do cleanups for homes as well. But we've also, that's something that we've really been addressing as far as how to create a better schematic for getting our city cleaner. So we, it's definitely something if you, if you're around here, you'll know that everyone on this committee wholeheartedly agrees with you.
Well, I rode around the city, and I watched this little house before I bought it. I go a different way every time I come, not every time, but a lot of times before I come home, and I noticed the streets, if the street sweeper were there, weeds wouldn't be growing up in the middle of our street. And I kept asking, you know, when the street sweeper was coming. And I talked to Mr. Chandler. He was very nice, and he came out, because it was, I was there, and I was out in the yard quite a bit, and I was over here more than I was in St. John's Street, and I didn't see a street sweeper for two years. And one day I heard something, and I was upstairs, and I looked down, and I saw the street sweeper. He didn't get close to the curb. It was, he went down the middle a couple of times.
We're addressing it.
And it was like five foot. And knowing me, you know, I've got a couple of this. And this is what I'm saying, keeping it clean. We really need to make an effort.
We're on it. We're on it.
And if I can help, I'm here.
We'll, we'll, we'll give you information. Thank you.
We have a cleanup on the 19th of this month. Right. The river front.
September 19.
September 19, 8 o'clock. Water front.
Anyone else here for public comment? Seeing nobody, goes public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, item number A, 2015-11-61, accepting proposal to renew the city's health and dental insurance with Florida Blue, Blue Cross Blue Shield for policy period of 10-1 2015 through 9-30 2016, authorizing city manager to execute all documentation, facilitating renewal thereof. B, adopt 2015-11-62, authorizing PPD application for Bureau of Justice Assistance, 2015 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, county solicitation, $13,325 with no match. C, 2015-11-63, authorizing execution of Victims of Crime Act grant PPD in amount of $37,942 for fiscal year 2015-16 to fund a full-time victim's advocate position. D, Resolution 2015-11-64, authorizing use of special cemetery funds in the amount not to exceed $10,000 for tree removal at Westview Cemetery, awarding a bid in the amount of $8,500 to Above and Beyond Tree Service for tree removal at Westview Cemetery, and authorizing up to $1,500 additional for project addendums, if any. E, setting a hangar office rental rates at the Palack Municipal Airport. F, adopting 2015 Putnam County Mitigation Plan. G, grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels for special events permit number 1529, Seventh Annual Veterans Appreciation Bass Permit on Saturday, September 19, 2015, Joseph Nickel Agent for the Bass Capital Bass Masters applicant. H, authorizing closure of certain streets to vehicle traffic and waive application deadline for special events permit number 15-33, Florida's Healthiest Weight 5K Walk/Run 92615 from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Mary Garcia Agent for the Putnam County Health Department. I, grant permission to exceed allowable noise level, so authorize closure of certain streets to vehicle traffic, special events number, permit number 1505, Azalea City Cruze Inn, 101015 for 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Phil Vaughn Agent for Azalea City Cruisers applicant. J, permission to exceed allowable noise levels and authorize closure of certain streets to vehicle traffic for special events permit number 1527, October Fest, March and Frolic, 101715 from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and 101815 from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Marsha Marinelli Agent for Keep Putnam Beautiful and March and Trail Conference. Those are all the items. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be pulled?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think four, item J, 3J.
Is there any, is there any other item that needs to be pulled?
(Inaudible) Make a motion to approve items 3A through I, and pull them through on 4J for discussion.
Motion to approve consent agenda minus item J. Is there, there's a second by Commissioner Campbell. We'll call a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item 3J, grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels and authorize closure of certain streets to vehicle traffic, special events permit number 1527, October Fest, March and Frolic, 101715 from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., 101815, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Marsha Marinelli Agent for Keep Putnam Beautiful and March and Trail. Is Ms. Marinelli here?
Mr. Crowe.
Mr. Mayor, Palack, Land and Director, I'm also here with Q. on the right, Special District Coordinator. Have to answer any questions.
Well, there was this concern with the event going on during church hours. I guess there was a request asking to have that not interfere with the church hours, which they were asking to have it anytime after noon on October 18.
That issue did not come up during the special week's meeting, but yeah, if they addressed whether they have any problem with moving that up to, I guess, 1 o'clock or...
They just mentioned after 12, so 12:30, 1 o'clock. I don't...
We have a problem with that. I'd like to see if the applicant has any...
I didn't see that. I don't see that applicant present.
I don't think it's a crucial matter. I don't think they'll depart.
Is that, is that a motion too? Is that a motion by you, Commissioner Borum, to approve this?
Approve item J, this motion, approve item J with making a modification to the time to 1 o'clock p.m. that day.
Motion settled on the floor. Discussion. CNN will call a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item four on the agenda, the request to allow family to farm outreach program to set up a mobile farm marketplace at the Price Market Center parking lot on Monday afternoons. Betsy Freeman is the rep. This was continued over from our August 18 meeting. Ms. Freeman, will you please come forward? And do you have another representative coming up with you today? And just for the commission's recollection, this item was, this item was continued based on the fact that we're just making sure that all the zoning issues were in perspective. Mr. Crowe, do we have an answer as it relates to zoning? Can you come forward and maybe give us, give us an update as to where we are from the zoning perspective?
Palack, Park and Land and Director, we're going to apologize for not being here the last time you considered this. At your request, we did look into this. At this point in time, zoning laws, which is very strict on outdoor sales, would not permit the farm family truck operation really anywhere outside of a special event. We have proposed, I've talked to city manager about this, we have proposed, I, what I think is probably a comprehensive approach to this, dealing not just with the farm to produce trucks, but also the food trucks, which perhaps interests a number of parties, and also produce standards associated with convenience stores to provide more healthy eating opportunities within the community in particular. We are engaging with the health department, we're looking at what other communities do, and we, on the planning board agenda for this coming month, October, we do have this as an agenda item, hope to bring this to you in ordinance at your second October meeting. That's where we are.
So is there an, so is there an opportunity to, and it seems like the consensus of the commission at the last meeting was we were all in favor of doing something to deal specifically with food deserts. Is there an opportunity for us to do something by way of special, by way of a special event permit or something to that effect?
In the interim, I believe you could consult with Mr. Holmes while we're away, and you can do emergency action to approve this, or we could do this as a special event, which can be fairly quickly. Doesn't really meet the intent of special events, but I think it's something we can do if you wanted us to do it.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I do have a question about the Price Market. You know, there are such stipulations around that community center about what type of activity can go on there, and I know we're talking about the parking lot, so far over the center itself as well. Does that, those stipulations, does it allow us to use the parking lot for sales?
We haven't found anything that would prohibit it. My main concern would be that not walk driveways, need parking, and find an appropriate place for it. I don't think there's anything really, unless Ms. Gregers or someone else has the information on that.
Mayor, I called and talked to Bois Thompson to see if this about being a, you know, mobile transportation hub, if it'd be a problem. And he said he did not think that it would be a problem for them. They could just, when they get there, get with them, and they would tell them where to park, so they would not stop the bus, bus flow or any other thing. And they, he thought it was a good idea to help people, so...
So I, I think one of the things we've got to look at is we look at where we are as a county, where we're at from a health perspective. And, you know, one reason that, you know, I asked Ms. Gregers to bring this idea to the commission, she approached us initially, she approached me initially about it, but I asked her to bring it to the commission because I, I thought it was an innovative opportunity for us, one, to have local products available to our citizens, regardless of what income bracket they were in. But it was also an opportunity, because when we look at health, health and, we look at health and, health and money go hand in hand. And so the fact that there were incentives for individuals to be able to get to the one purchasing things of that nature, and the city could be at the forefront of that, it seemed to be a very innovative idea. I think that we need to be urged to do whatever we can do to make this initiative a reality, wherever we can do it within this community. And whatever roadblocks or impediments we have in place, we need to see what we can do as a city to start. we need to see what we can do as a city to start.